Good evening and welcome. El siguiente mensaje será repetido en español. I'd like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will hear thirty minutes of public comment. At the end of the meeting, there will be another and final opportunity for additional public comments. So if you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, you can stay and speak at the end. To participate in public comment, please raise your hand now by clicking on the participate button at the bottom of your screen and selecting the raise your hand. To comment by phone, you'll be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. If you wait to raise your hand until the comment period starts, you will not get to speak and you'll have to wait until the next public comment period. When called upon, you'll be promoted to panelist. This means that you will appear on screen. And if you do not wish to appear on camera, please be sure to disable your camera on your end. The board president will usually call on our students first. If you are a student who wishes to speak, please write student at the end of your name. The board president will determine whether to set tonight's speaking time at one, two, or three minutes per speaker. On an individual basis, he also has a discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other special needs. When your time has elapsed, you'll see Vice President Brown holding a sign, letting you know you have fifteen seconds left. If you're still speaking, you are allowed to finish your sentence, but please try not to speak beyond your time. Thank you.
Voy a proporcionarles un resumen detallando el orden de esta reunión. Después de unos predecimientos preliminares, un periodo de treinta minutos será dedicado a comentarios públicos. Al final de la junta, que usualmente puede ser cerca de las diez, habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para quienes desean participar en comentario público y parte de miembros de la audiencia que no tuvieron la oportunidad de proporcionar comentarios durante el primer periodo de comentario público. Para comentar por videoconferencia, por favor levante la mano ya haciendo clic en el botón participantes en la parte de abajo de la pantalla y seleccione el botón de levantar la mano or raise your hand. Para comentar por teléfono, levanta la mano presionando estrella nueve. Por favor decelo ya, ya que si se espera hasta el inicio del periodo comentarios públicos, tendrá que esperar hasta el final de la reunión para participar. Usualmente, el presidente llamará a los estudiantes primero. El presidente de la mesa directiva otará uno, dos, o tres minutos por orador y tiempo adicional a quienes requieren traducción o cualquier otra opción especial. Ser llamado será promocionado a panelista y aparecerán en pantalla. Si no desea aparecer en pantalla, por favor de apagar su cámara. Cuando le faltan quince segundos, la vicepresidente le hará saber levantando un cartel. Si todavía está hablando cuando se acaba el tiempo, puede terminar su tiempo. Pero por favor, no trate de pasar su tiempo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much, Ms. Barrios, and welcome everyone to the November seventeenth meeting of the Berkeley School Board. I'm going to call the open session meeting order at seven oh five P M. And for the record, we opened the meeting at five thirty, five P M. and recessed into closed session. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll? Student Director Anduna Mascareña Swan. Director Ana Basudev.
Vicente.
Director Laura Babbitt.
Here.
Director Julie Sinai.
Here.
Vice President Khadija Brown.
Present.
And President Ty Alper. Present. Thank you. If you'd like to give public comment, now would be the time to raise your hand. We have a small crowd tonight, about fifteen people, sixteen people in the audience. But if you'd like to give public comment, please do raise your hand now so we can see how much time we have to give to everybody. Okay, now I will, now we need to approve the meeting agenda. So is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is it, is this where we need to pull that one item from the consent calendar?
Thank you, Director Babbitt. Which, Mr. Aurelio, which one is it?
Let me see. Actually, Dr. Stevens, you have the item number looking up. It's on the consent.
This is the sixth item in item eleven point five. So eleven point.
Eleven point five, right.
Contracts, it's the six of those items related to the major permanent.
Okay, so we're, we're, we're removing item.
It would be eleven point six, correct.
Okay, it's actually just. Yeah, thanks, Dr. Babbitt. Although, just, I think there's a typo in the item. On eleven point five, it's listed as number eight, I think. It goes from five to eight, but it's actually the sixth one. So just to make it even more confusing, we're pulling what actually is listed as the eighth item in item eleven point five, but it's actually the sixth one, but just to say what it is. It's the contract with.
Freedom Soul.
Freedom Soul.
Freedom Soul Media, yeah, media education, that item.
We're pulling that. So is there a motion to approve the agenda with that one part removed?
So moved with the necessary corrections.
Okay, motion by Vice President Brown, second by Director Sinai. Ms. Barrios, can you call the roll, please? Student Director Mascareña Swan.
Yes.
Director Basudev.
Yes.
Director Babbitt.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Vice President.
Yes.
Is it an Alper? Um, yes. All right. Thank you, everybody. Now, we will have a report from closed session. Vice President Brown.
Thank you, President Alper, for closed session. All board, school board directors were present. And for item three point one, the board heard an update and a direction. And this is the report from closed session.
Short and sweet. Thank you, Vice President Brown. All right, now we will move to public testimony, so. I'll give people like ten more seconds to raise their hand if they want to. One, two, three, four, six, seven. Okay. There's seven people with their hands raised, so you can each have three minutes. Erin Rhodes is going to be the last speaker. And just, I know you all in the audience can't see the participants, but just for our marking, Erin Rhodes will be the last speaker. Wait, what's happening here? Oh, okay. Gladys Stout. You'll be first, and then, Ms. Barrios, if you could, if you could put Robert Collier second after Miss Stout, and then we'll, and then we'll go back to Miguel Piedra. Go ahead. Three, okay, go ahead, Miss Stout.
Hello. Good evening, Superintendent Stevens and school board members. I'm here representing Latinos Unidos at Berkeley. We are concerned because we have been hearing that in preparation for the budget cuts, the district is proposing a hold on hiring positions that are of vital importance to our most vulnerable communities. There has been major advocacy around the need for a Spanish language specialist at the district level for the Office of Family Engagement. Last year, the school board approved a part-time position for this work, although Latinos Unidos strongly believes that we need a full-time district-wide Spanish language engagement specialist that can support the whole district and would carry the work to communicate and do outreach to the Latinx and Spanish-speaking community. We are concerned that the district-wide bilingual OFI position is being seen as a new position and will be placed on hold for hiring. This position is long overdue and is urgently needed. During last year's budget cycle, the Spanish-speaking split position was approved by the board for funding under the General Fund and received support from, from SBA, D-LAC, and the PAC. It is a shame to see that the board will now consider freezing a position that many district committees and Latinx families feel is essential. Furthermore, we continue to see a lack of engagement from the district to our Spanish-speaking families. For instance, we have seen little outreach to our families regarding the ELL master plan and other programs such as the Spanish-language district outreach for Latino literacy, CSIS, and STEM SEPS. We know that the district is working on these programs and says Latinx children are part of them, but what good is it to make these investments if we do not have the staff at the district level actively reaching out to Spanish-speaking families to let them know about these opportunities? We hope that in the discussions of any budget cuts, we keep the most vulnerable communities and outreach engagement to Latinx families as a priority. This was an issue before COVID, but the negative impact that COVID has had on the Latinx community is something that will be felt for years to come. We hope that the district and school board fulfills the promise it made to the Latinx community and does not freeze services that are much needed for Spanish-speaking families. Please keep your promise to our community and do not freeze hiring for the district-wide Spanish-speaking bilingual OFI position. Budgets tell stories, and your current list of cuts is telling a story that our Spanish-speaking familias are not a priority. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Rob Collier, Robert Collier, followed by Miguel Piedra.
Good evening, Superintendent Stevens and board school board members. I'm Rob Collier, parent of a sixth grader at Wong Phil Middle School, and I'm here to speak in support of the comments by Latinos Unidos de Berkeley regarding the new Spanish-language OFI position at the district level. I hope you will please find a way not to cut this position. So as Gladys Stout has mentioned, this position is long overdue. The Spanish-speaking OFI liaison based in district offices is urgently needed to conduct outreach to Spanish-speaking families, both over as Latino literacy, Puente, STEM steps, and the Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervening Services, or CSIS. You have many claims on the district budget, but this OFI position is only a part-time slot. It's a small investment that would have an oversized benefit. It would be money very efficiently spent on a critical need. The district has made a strong commitment to address educational gaps by engaging with Latinx families, but that doesn't align with a potential decision to freeze this position in OFI. Such a decision would be a step backward. Please protect this position in your ongoing budget decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Next, we have Miguel Piedra, followed by Amanda Toporak.
Hi, good evening, Berkeley Board of Education. My name is Miguel. I am a graduate from Berkeley High School and from the Bioscience Courier Institute with Biotech Partners. I wanted to share my story to discuss the importance of the Development Agreement for STEAM education. Biotech Partners helped me secure an internship at Bear during the height of the COVID pandemic. The internship was instrumental in teaching me vital biotech skills while also supplementing my family's expenses. And since I've joined the program, I continue to grow in responsibility and effectiveness as both a student and a scientist. Thanks to their continued support, even after program graduation, I've been able to land a position as a Lapt technician at Avaloni Bio, a lab in Emeryville. I'm confident that with the continued support of the Biotech Partners program, other students such as myself will be able to turn their passion into career. I would appreciate the Berkeley Boards of Education consideration into supporting the Development Agreement for STEAM education for high school and community college students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being here. Next, we have Amanda Toporak, followed by Linda Gaden, and then Erin Rhodes.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Toporak, and I am a teacher at Berkeley High School. And I am here to talk to you, unfortunately, about nothing as wonderful as everyone else has talked about, but an incessant buzzing in my classroom. We know that we have custodial staff tirelessly working on this, and I am a team player. If it had been a couple days or even a week, I would not be here to talk to you about it. I work in the M Building at Berkeley High School, and it has been buzzing in there since November fourth. And we are now being told that it will take two to three more weeks for that buzzing to stop. Our administrators have told us that basically we're in a situation where either we hear buzzing constantly, but in the case of an emergency, we can hear our principal over the P A system, or they can turn off the P A system in our building, which would stop the buzzing, but not allow us to hear announcements in emergencies. At this point, it is impeding student learning and my ability to serve students. Students constantly are trying to focus, at this point in the semester, on final projects and work and telling me that the buzzing is driving them mad. I have plenty of students, a high percentage actually, on the autism spectrum, and you can imagine constant relatively loud buzzing is more than just unpleasant for those students. And not to mention, I now run out of school at three thirty P M., when usually I would be extremely lenient and patient with my time and offer students extra help. It's also the season of writing letters of recommendation, in which I usually love staying late at school and getting that work done, but now I am sprinting home to find another quiet place to work. So I ask you to please support our custodial staff and send them any resources possible to please, please, please stop the buzzing, so we can all be back here to talk about more important things. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being here and for letting us know. Next, we have Linda Gaden and then Erin Rhodes.
Good evening, Superintendent Stevens and school board members. My name is Linda Gaden. I serve as the Executive Director of Biotech Partners. Biotech Partners was established in nineteen ninety-three as part of the original Development Agreement between Bear and the city of Berkeley. Our mission is to educate underserved youth from populations underrepresented in STEM fields with personal academic and professional development experiences that increase participation in higher education and access to fulfilling science careers. Biotech Partners would not exist today without the Development Agreement, Bear's community benefit, and our partnership with Berkeley High School Career Technical Education Department. Since its inception, we have had thirty-nine hundred participants in our program. Each summer, our rising seniors intern in real-world bioscience environments in which they commun- commun- I'm sorry, communutedly, earn three point five million. Bear has hosted fifteen internship placements annually for our Berkeley High, totaling four hundred and fifty young people who have gained meaningful work experience in various Bear departments. Eighty-five of our participants fall in the income challenge bracket, and eighty-five percent identify either as people of color or as female. As a recipient of the community benefits and our valuable partnership with Berkeley High School, we have offered Berkeley High students a supportive pathway out of economic hardship and into the rapidly growing and much-needed bioscience industry. Berkeley High School has been vital to BP's longevity and success. The work internships Bear has provided has been essential to our mission and to bettering the lives of Berkeley residents, students over the long term. Our graduates demonstrate the effectiveness of our approach. Our fifty-four alum have gone on to lucrative careers at Bear and other biotech companies or other scientific fields. With Bear's generous support of the community benefit, Biotech Partners has been able to introduce students to bioscience careers and provide them complete wraparound support to enable student success. COVID nineteen has shown us both the intense and ongoing vulnerability of income-challenge populations of color and the dire need for STEAM development. During COVID, we placed forty-two Berkeley High students into paid internships in which they collectively earned seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. I wholeheartedly support the community benefits of the new Development Agreement without hesitation because it will give the community ongoing access to opportunities for economic development and growth and learn in the STEAM field, supporting Berkeley students to gain an equitable start and bright future in the biotech field. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gaden. Thanks for being here. And then our final commenter of the night is Erin Rhodes.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Board President Alper. I'm Erin Rhodes, the Executive Director of the Berkeley Public Schools Fund. I would like to express my appreciation for the level of community partnership represented by the Development Agreement between the city of Berkeley and Bear on your agenda for discussion this evening. The Development Agreement funds a continuum of career-connected STEM learning for Berkeley students, expanding access to college and career opportunities for students who most need it. I especially want to thank Director Sinai and Basudev for offering the proposed language in tonight's amendment that emphasizes the importance of using this funding to open doors for Berkeley students who are furthest from opportunity. The Berkeley Public Schools Fund has been a beneficiary of the existing thirty-year Bear Development Agreement, and we have Bear to thank for enriching science education in BUSD with programs like Be a Scientist, which serves every seventh grader in our district. The Schools Fund looks forward to aligning our programming with the goals of this Development Agreement through our strong partnership with the Career Technical Education Program in BUSD. Thanks to the CTE program and the Bear Development Agreement, Berkeley is positioning itself to significantly expand college and career STEM opportunities for the members of our community who have been historically excluded from STEM fields. Thank you to the board for prioritizing this item.
Thanks so much, Ms. Rhodes. And it's always nice to take the opportunity to thank you and the Schools Fund for everything you do. So thank you. And there she goes. All right. Moving right along. I don't see, I don't think we have any, do we have any union comment? I'll just ask. If there's any union representatives here, please raise your hand. Any committee representatives can also raise their hands now. The people, a minute. I don't, I don't think anybody let us know that they were giving comment for the unions or the committees, so I don't see any. So we will move. We will move right along to board member, board member and superintendent comments. If anybody has any. Does anyone have any comments they'd like to give? I'm going to ask it that way, since we're a small crowd here tonight. If anybody does, raise your hand. Who's there? Director Basudev.
I'll just be really brief. I have just brief comments. I wanted to thank everyone for your public comments tonight, especially grateful to the community advocates who came to give comments about the proposed budget cuts. I appreciate your advocacy and support of the Spanish-speaking OFI position, and will save my more substantive comments for the budget discussion later tonight. I also wanted to thank all the BHS families and educators who have written to us about safety concerns at the high school. Last Friday, I was really lucky to visit the high school and meet with our safety officers and SRO to have some intimate discussion about safety issues. I'm grateful to the staff of the high school and to our district staff, our central office staff, who have been working really hard to address these issues, and it was nice to see our central office staff also there at the high school. I also wanted just to appreciate the Berkeley High PTSA for having me at your meeting last night, and it was just such a wonderful discussion with the Berkeley High community and with our educators about what culture change could look like at the high school and what, what was happening on site post the pandemic. And to hear from students too, like what is their vision for, for their high school experience moving forward and some of the, you know, emotional and mental health challenges that they're seeing right now. So I appreciate you having me and just spending time listening to everybody. And lastly, I just want to quickly announce that I'm having office hours this Sunday, November twenty-first, from nine to ten A M., and on Sunday, December twelfth, from nine to ten A M. at Lavender Bakery on Solano Avenue. And so I hope to see many of you there, and especially as we are making budget decisions. I'm all ears. I would love to hear from the community about what they're thinking of our proposed budget cuts. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Basudev. Director Sinai.
Thank you. I just want to start by recognizing tonight and respecting, excuse me, the Aloney territory where we currently reside is with gratitude and the utmost respect of the ancestors and all of those living and working this land. As we enter into Thanksgiving Week and Native American Heritage Month, it's critical that we recognize the past and the present injustices facing our indigenous communities and that we honor and recognize the ongoing powerful presence of the Aloney people on this land. So as we enter into Thanksgiving, I hope that we all reflect on what has gone on on the land that we are currently having our meeting on and continue to work in partnership with the indigenous communities here in the Bay Area and East Bay.
Thank you, Director Sinai. Director Babbitt.
Yes, thank you so much, and thank you for that recognition, Director Sinai. In keeping with that, the Milwaukee Forest Planting Day is scheduled for Friday, November nineteenth, and this will be a ceremony from the Aloney tribal leaders to really bless the land before we plant the trees. That will happen at nine A M. From ten to four P M., BUSD students will plant saplings, and five P M. mulching and first watering of the Milwaukee Forest will take place. So you can RSVP to Neelam Patel, who is a teacher in Berkeley Unified, neelampatil@berkeley.net, if you would like to attend. And we definitely want to, at the most, send them our well wishes and thank them for this work that they are doing for the environment. Also want to thank Berkeley Side and Ally and Kelly for the nice article that they did around our climate literacy resolution. Really appreciate the ways in which they highlight the good, the bad, and even the ugly that happens in our school district, so that we can continue to thrive and make different, and make a change in our community. Last but not least, you will see many of the Berkeley Stands United Against Hate backgrounds. Grateful for this week. And the League of Women Voters is showing a movie in honor of Berkeley Standing United Against Hate. You can check out their website. It is tomorrow at six thirty P M. And the screening is called Racially Charged: America's Misdemeanor Problem. So I hope all of those who can will really seek this out, so we can really dive deeper into the criminal justice and diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives that the League of Women Voters are taking part in this week. Also want to let my board colleagues know that Young, Gifted, and Black, which is something we've been talking about since February of last year as a part of our African-American Success Framework and our Direct Services Initiative, has still not started in BUSD. It is November seventeenth. We approved it several months ago. I've been following up rapidly, consistently, not rapidly, but consistently, and yet they still have not started. So we are definitely in danger of losing that direct service program as they have other venues that they are really going to be moving to, starting after Thanksgiving break. So, thanks.
Thank you, Director Babbitt. I don't see other hands up, so I'm going to go to Dr. Stevens.
Great. Thank you very much, President Alper. I'm going to offer a little bit more information about the Miyawaki forests that are being installed in three of our schools. These are really interesting plantings taking place. These are very unique plantings called Miyawaki forests, developed by an agriculturalist in Japan. We believe that we're the first school district in the country to be installing this particular type of forest. The Miyawaki method combines the layers of a naturally occurring forest, shrubs, trees, and canopy, into small plots of land, turning them into dense urban forests. These forests grow ten times faster, store forty times more carbon than conventional forests, and encourage one hundred times more biodiversity and can fit into a small pocket of a school playground or roadside. They also serve as wildlife corridors for native fauna which are in danger of extinction. Our ultra-dense biodiverse forests will include a total of three thousand, three hundred saplings on about thirteen thousand square feet between three school sites and come to BUSD through a partnership with the Natural Urban Forests and an organization called SUGI, who are also providing funding for this project. I want to call out our grounds department and then in particular, call out the leadership of Steve Collins, one of our district employees, as well as Sophia Pelts, our sustainability coordinator, for their leadership and coordination on this project. I also have good news to report to the city of Berkeley. We recently received information from the city of Berkeley that we now can report that forty-five percent of Berkeley residents aged five to eleven have already received their first dose of the COVID nineteen vaccine. So that's just Berkeley residents, and that's data reported by the city of Berkeley to us just today. More than five hundred BUSD students ages five to eleven have already been vaccinated at school site clinics at Malcolm X across from BHS and at Rosa Parks. Our Office of Family Engagement and Equity worked to do one-to-one outreach to families facing access challenges to registration before opening up clinic registration to the larger community. And then we refined this outreach process as we learned more about how this could work to serve our most under-resourced families. The elementary school clinics have included music, entertainment, balloons, stickers. The elementary school clinics have included music, entertainment, balloons, stickers and snacks, making for a relaxed and enjoyable experience for most students. There were a few tears, we did see that. We want to call out the city of Berkeley for their partnership, Carbon Health, who is working with the city of Berkeley, and then as well to the Berkeley Public Schools Fund and all of their volunteers for making this as an enjoyable experience as possible. We are hosting another vaccine clinic this Saturday at Sylvia Mendez Elementary School. That's from nine o'clock to 3:30 in the afternoon. We've been doing targeted outreach over the course of the early part of this week. And at this point, by today on Wednesday, all families of students aged five to 11 should have received an email from the district with opportunities to register for the Sylvia Mendez Clinic. I also want to call out another member of our staff for her very tireless work to pull all of these vaccine clinics together. That is our Public Information Officer, Trish McDermott. She already has a very busy schedule maintaining all of our media relations and coordinating a number of important communications campaigns. And she's really taken on the lion's share of coordinating these vaccine clinics. I know just last week, she worked a total of 75 hours across both of these jobs. And so I want to call out that extraordinary work and really thank her for the effort to help bring together city of Berkeley vaccination opportunities and our families. And then finally, I want to call out a couple more of our BUSD folks who are doing quiet but important sort of data infrastructure work. This is not the kind of work that's going to make the newspaper and nonetheless makes for a big difference in our school district. And these are the folks who are leading the conversion from one data management system to another. We are currently in the process of switching from a system called QSS to another called Escape. This is a large sort of architectural project that involves all of our various district office departments, is going to span the scope of a full year and involves a high degree of problem solving, coordination and communication. So, I want to call out the leadership of Samantha Tobias Espinoza for her work on this, her colleague Pauline Follinsby and as well our Director of Finance, Liz Karam. There are a number of other managers and department folks who are involved. It totals a team of more than two dozen who at this point are putting in more than a day's work per week on this project alone. So, this is adding a great deal to their plates and please know, we see it, we want to recognize that effort. And then as a last note, I also want to acknowledge United Against Hate Week this week. You know, here in Berkeley, we prided ourselves for a very long time in standing against hate and serving our communities effectively. And yet we know, we have many steps that we must take in order to be a more effective organization, both in combating hate as it appears in our school campuses in our community and in serving all of our families. So, my specific call to all of our employees this week is that as we stand together against hate, we also have to stand with a humble stance, recognizing that we ourselves must improve. That's each of us as individuals, as employees and as an organization. The more we listen, the more we enter into conversations with our community with an open heart, the more effective allies we can be. So, with that, I'm going to turn it back over to you, President Elper, and I appreciate the opportunity to share this information.
Thank you so much. I just, I, you don't have to turn on your camera, Ms. McDermott, but I just wanted to promote you to the panelists here so that we can echo Dr. Stevens' thanks to you for the work that you did with, and the work you've been doing ever since COVID started, but particularly with these vaccine clinics, to have the clinics up and running, you know, two or three days after, you know, the vaccines were authorized for kids that age, was just an incredible accomplishment, something I think we're all super proud of and just really grateful to you for. So, thank you for taking on this, this completely separate extra work that, that has just been so critical to our ability to keep kids in school. All right, and with that, I will move us along to the consent counter. Is there a motion to approve the consent counter?
I'm moved.
Motion to move Vice President Brown.
Second.
Who is that? Director Rassidov?
Yep.
And can you please call the role, Ms. Barrios?
Student Director Mascareña Swan.
Yes.
Director Vasupev.
Yes.
Director Babett.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
Senator Elper.
Yes. All right, thanks, Ms. Barrios. Now, we have our first discussion item, which is item 12.1. Dr. Stevens and Assistant Superintendent Follinsby.
Yes, thank you very much. So, in just one minute, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Assistant Superintendent Pauline Follinsby. She runs our business services here in the district. I thought what I would do is offer though, just a quick bit of context. We are in yet another really remarkable budget year. In fact, it's been each of the last three years where public schools, school boards, superintendents and staff have had to overcome a variety of challenges. Just as we were sort of finishing up the year when the pandemic started, we were facing what we thought was going to be a catastrophic 7%, 8%, 10% budget reduction. That turned around very quickly despite all of the work we did on those reductions and we were in a period where we were spending a lot of one-time money, but all of us worried about potential structural challenges as they were coming. These structural challenges are now well documented in the media. They have to do with the decline in student enrollment in public schools across districts in California and really across the country. And we have not been immune from these enrollment declines. Over the course of the last two years, about 600 students fewer are now attending Berkeley schools compared to the pre-pandemic period. These 600 students represents a potential loss in revenue of about $6.6 million. And as a result of the sort of potential cliff, which is being called in school districts around the country, the Alameda County Office of Education is asking Berkeley Unified and many other districts to engage in a preliminary plan to reduce our budget if that proves to be necessary. Usually when we're talking about the budget season, we talk about the January to June time period. It's very rare for us to be thinking about budget reductions in the fall and yet here we are. So, in response to a requirement by the Alameda County Office of Education, we have been starting to re-energize all of our budget committees. We're asking them to weigh in on a preliminary list of reductions and we will be bringing this preliminary list of reductions to the board for approval on December 15th. So, we're about a month away from having a finalized list and the purpose of tonight's public discussion is both to share with the community some of our very early ideas for this preliminary list, to solicit feedback from board members and to continue the process of refining this list. I want to emphasize that this December 15th list is non-binding. It's preliminary. It will be submitted to the county, but then we will be watching with a lot of eagerness to see what the governor says about revenue for the school districts in January. And then we're all watching to see what impact vaccinations have on elementary school enrollment. So, I ask members of the community, members of the board, to sort of keep in mind that everything we're talking about is very provisional. None of it needs to be enacted, but all of it is sort of a step made in the name of cautiousness. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Follinsby. She'll walk us through some more information and share with you the preliminary list as it exists in this draft state right now.
Thank you Superintendent Stevens. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to need the ability to be able to share my screen. So, if I could get that, I'll walk you through our slide deck. So, thank you, Dr. Stevens, for the introduction. And as Dr. Stevens mentions, this is a very unusual time for us to be bringing budget reductions to the board for discussion. And as he mentioned, this is being given primarily by request from our Alameda County Office of Ed. And as he also mentions, these are not binding, but this is just to give the board an idea of where we are in the process. And we will be bringing a final list back on the 8th and the 15th. So, I think I will get the board through looking at our budget development principles. We've finalized principles in terms of how we're actually approaching our budget reductions. And also we'll take you through a workbook that we're currently working on with Sback, the Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee. There's a slide with link to data and resources. We're trying to have data-driven decisions as much as possible. So, this, I'll also, I'll share with you some of the data that we're looking at in Sback, remind you what the target is and also share with you Alameda County Office of Ed's format that they shared with us for the budget reductions. So, this is hopefully the format that we'll be bringing to the board when we bring the final budget reductions. We also have a format from the prior year and then the last few slides will be on our future meeting dates. So, this budget development principles was developed in our budget leadership team. And I'll take you through this pretty I'll take you through this pretty quickly. And the, the beginning here is a preamble in terms of what's driving the need for these budget principles, budget reduction principles. But the guiding principles are for our budget development period in 2223. And you can see the first principle we're working with is protecting services to students. Cuts should take place away from programs that directly serve students. The second principle, our bearing in mind are LCAP goals and programs. Our budget priorities will be derived from LCAP goals and actions which center on improved services to unduplicated students and other prioritized groups like African-Americans, Latinx, Latinx Act and students with disabilities. And as I mentioned earlier, we are having a data-driven approach. And so as much as possible, cuts to programs will be data-driven, guided by outcomes, qualitative data about students, families' perceptions of success or measures of implementation. So, we are also having a focus where we will be looking at budget reductions across the board. So, some portion of cuts will be equal and will come from all departments. We also are looking at opportunities for service restructuring. And over the course of the year, in building the 2223 budget, we'll be looking at possible areas for larger restructuring and efficiencies. And our sixth principle, we're going to, we're, we want to be transparent about interconnected budgets. And the district will make interrelated budgets, like the general fund, BSEP, and the state supplemental grants available to committees, even if each committee has a particular purview. So, so you may remember the last time we did budget reductions, it wasn't just the unrestricted general fund, we looked at all our funding sources. And in some cases where there were reductions in other programs, we're able to do swaps to, to alleviate the unrestricted general fund. Dr. Stevens, did you want to add anything at this point or?
No, you've done a great job, thank you.
Okay. So, the next slide, this is a work that we're, that we're working with our Sback, our Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee. So, so this is a, these are the adjustments and we've grouped them by educational programs, operations, human resources and staffing, BSEP and also looking at new grants that have been made available to the district. So, in Sback, we had Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Aurelio went through all of these areas and I'm just sharing these with you in terms of our approach. And if there are questions in this area, either Dr. Stevens or Reuben will actually.
I don't, Assistant Superintendent Follinsby, why don't we sort of pass it over to Associate Superintendent Aurelio? He can walk us through very quickly sort of the key elements of this list, just so that they get a brief description.
Okay.
Good evening.
All right.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I'll gladly take us through the educational program items. The rows that you see, if you can make it just slightly larger, it might be maybe 125%. It'll be easier to see. The first rows you see there, rows three, four, five and six, the first four items there, those are all related to our special education services. We have seen the cost rise in special education over the last three to four years. And so what we are looking at is as a way to reduce the overall cost of special education, not by reducing services in any way, we have to provide the same services to students. Those are mandated by IEPs. But we are looking at building our own services and reducing how many of these services we contract out. So, row three, which is adult transition program, we currently outsource our adult transition program. That's your 18 to 22-year-old continued services. So, we would be looking at a way to build our own in-house program, partnering potentially with the adult school. And they could conceivably continue services beyond 23 for adults at that point as well. So, there's real an opportunity to partner and build our own in-house services. SPG is a contract that we have where we contract out for our instructional assistance. We've had a really challenging time hiring our IAs that are assigned to either one-on-one to students or in groups. And that, we are looking at a contract that is now over $5 million. That has really grown significantly over the last four years. Just in relative nature, it was under $1 million four years ago. So, this is definitely a challenge. It is made significantly more challenging just in our current hiring environment. You know that these are entry-level positions typically and so we really need to boost that ability to hire our own IAs. Had a great conversation with Tom Reed of Adult School, potentially building now our own training program so we could train people to be IAs in the adult school and then hire them, which would be great for Berkeley. So, really trying to connect those dots. We're going to be examining our different programs, especially our students that we are currently sending to non-public school placements and looking how we can start to build some of those programs in-house as well to limit how many services we're sending out. We have started this year with the addition of additional psychologists to do our own educational-related mental health services assessments. We typically had contracted that out with Alameda County and we're starting to bring some of that back. So, we will continue on that pathway of doing our own services. Those are those big four special education-based items. The interesting piece here is it wouldn't be a reduction in staff. In fact, we would be adding staff and services, but the assumed savings come in the fact that we wouldn't be contracting those out. Item seven is teachers on special assignment. So, Berkeley as a school district, as a job classification, has over 84 teachers on special assignment for a total of about $9.4 million. So, we're just putting in sort of a blanket statement right here that this was a lot of more information needs to be determined before we ever get down to a specific position. TSAs have come in a variety of categories. There are centralized or district office TSAs. There are also site-based TSAs, including literacy coaches, math coaches, English language development TSAs that provide direct services to students. Using the principles, the budget principles that Assistant Follinsby, Assistant Superintendent Follinsby presented, we would be really looking closely at not trying to cut positions that are directly serving students. And of course, 10% of that would be roughly around $150,000. I do want to name too that we have a number of vacancies in this category as well that could assume some of those cuts. The last category here is the U9, the Universal Ninth Grade Program at Berkeley High. We have what is called the LEAP class. A LEAP section is additional support for students. It is an elective course. We do not mandate it for our students. We offer it to our students as part of the HIDE structure. There are currently seven HIVES at Berkeley High under U9. Those are cohorts of 120 students. And so what we'd be looking at is reducing the number of LEAP sections per HIDE. We currently have very few students that are electing to be in the LEAP sections. And so we would be examining that closely to see if we can find some reductions in FTE or full-time equivalent teachers who are accounting for potentially two FTE in reduction. And we know that that causes some domino effects and we'll be working through that with the high score around scheduling and other factors. Lastly, we have gardening and cooking program there and that would be a reduction of $50,000 in the general fund as part of not the $300,000, but really the total budget, because it's close to $1 million. Majority of the funding that comes is through the SOTA tax that we get from Berkeley. Those are the ed services programs. I know I went quickly and if you have questions, I'll be here.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent. So, I'll take us through the remaining categories. In our operation. In our operations, we typically contribute the meals for the needy to that program. And because of increased participation in the nutrition services program. Partly because meals are actually free this year and next year, all meals, lunch and breakfast. But also the method of us, we're doing, um, the, the grab and go method for meals. So combined with the speed of delivery and the fact that meals are free. Where we will not be, be contributing about seven hundred thousand dollars per year. So that's the savings over two years. In operations, the district spends about twenty million dollars central office and maintenance and custodial services. We've gone through each program and have identified about six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in savings, which are partly being. As a result of positions that are not being filled, vacant positions that are not being filled or they're frozen for, for those operations. There's also in there a proposal for our transportation program where we will not be replacing three positions. And instead we'll be using their other budgets for overtime to increase the hours for our bus drivers. Human resources and staffing, the OFI positions. We, the supervisor position is vacant and we're proposing freezing that position since we have now hired a director. We have the, um, the split between King and Willard. For the liaison position as well as the another position, which is between the district and Spanish bilingual. These are both on the unfilled and they're both on the list. And of course, this is a preliminary suggestion that may or may not be fulfilled. There are also two OFI positions and these were approved by the board when we adopted the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. So with this funding, it's on COVID, so we're not scoring the reduction again as a budget, as a unrestricted budget. Unrestricted general fund savings, but there will be, we're proposing freezing those positions as well. And then in terms of looking at our enrollment based staffing, we protect that we will be able to save about a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. In staffing based on the reduced enrollment. So that's, that's an area that we think we'll be able to accomplish that. And then we have actually looked at projections for the teacher template for twenty-two, twenty-three. And we have built our assumptions on using that assumption in terms of enrollment. But we're also projecting possibly an additional fifty students for the lower grades. With the availability of vaccines for the five to eleven year olds. So this is very preliminary, very early in the budget process. And we're, we're, we'll be fine tuning this as we get more information. But with fifty students, we, we're believing that will generate about five hundred thousand dollars in revenue. And less staffing to accommodate that increase, we're projecting a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings. With BSEP, we've actually on the teacher template, we got revised enrollment projections from Francisco recently. So in looking at the savings in terms of the, the reduction in the number of teachers will, we will actually be paying for. Offset by the reduction in the contribution that the general fund receives from BSEP. We're projecting a savings of about six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. And we've also looked at our grants. The district has been fortunate enough to get a, um, an educator effectiveness grant is restricted. But it's, it's two point seven million dollars over five years, so it's not ongoing indefinitely. But we're looking at saving fifty percent of each year for each program. And that's what we're projecting a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings there. And we also benefited from the expanded learning opportunity grant that's ongoing, a million dollars restricted. And we're taking a look at that to see if there are any expenses that we can shift to this program that would have been cut otherwise. So it's not technically supplanting. And with that, we can see that we are up to six point three million dollars in budget reductions. A little short of the six point six million dollars. We will be convening the budget leadership team tomorrow to try and find additional savings. But as Dr. Stevens mentioned, this is a preliminary list that will be, that need to be board approved, that we will be sharing with ACOE. When we submit the first interim, but it's not binding. This is not something that we will have to do because there are so many unknowns at this, at this point. Including the governor's workshop, the governor's budget. So we have no idea what the budget, the governor is proposing for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So.
And superintendent Follinsby, maybe I could jump in here before we move from this list. I, I just wanted to offer a little bit of information about the OFI liaison positions here. So these are all openings. They have been posted. We have solicited candidates and we continue to go through that recruitment and hiring process. So the presence of these ideas on this list has not actually stopped. The district's work to try and fill these positions and it would actually only be with the approval of the board in a, in a month or so that we would cease that work. So I just wanted to make that, that sort of apparent to everybody that there's been no change in our approach to filling these positions. But we bring these ideas nonetheless for feedback tonight.
Thank you. Okay. So, um, take us back to the rest of our presentation. So this does have some information in terms of our ADA and our enrollment projections. We're bringing this back at first interim.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interject. Can, can we do questions more in sections? I don't sure how much time we've allotted for this, but I can imagine if we try to go through the whole thing that we may get lost.
Oh, Director Babett, I misunderstood what you meant by sections earlier. I thought you meant sections on the, on the budget workshop. Can you? What, what else? How much left is there in this presentation?
Not, not a lot, not, not a significant amount. We're just going to look at some dates. And, um, not a lot. I can just finish the presentation and then we could come back.
If we just, let's just do the dates, the next steps and then come back to this because again, as Dr. Stevens has said, this is. This is, it's, it's almost an exercise that we have to go through for the county office. And we don't have any idea what the actual budget is going to be. So. So we want to give our, our thoughts on the, on the cuts that have been identified, knowing that there's committees, community committees that are going to be looking at this. But, um, but yeah, but why don't we see what the next steps are and then, and then we can get people's thoughts.
Okay. Sorry. Is there a place where I can view the, but the budget reduction workbook? I don't see a link for it like there is for the other sheets.
There is a, there's a link right there.
It's in the, it's in, is it on agenda online?
Yes. It's not in agenda online. It was sent to board members, but it's in this presentation.
Okay. Can we just make sure the director of Oscarini Swan gets that?
Yes, we'll, we'll absolutely follow up.
Okay. All right. So if you could just, yeah.
Okay. So I'll just take us quickly through the other slides. So this is the data that we're working on providing to Sback that they've requested and we're working on getting some information to them. This is a reminder of our budget cut target. The ones that are highlighted are actually driven by the reduction in ADA. And that's what we're approaching at this, at this point. The rest of it will be looking at when we actually, um, in January to June, which is our traditional time. This is a quick look at the format that you.
Yeah, I don't think we need to see the format.
And then these are the future meeting dates. So you can see, um, in terms of the principals meeting November seventeenth, S and our other partners. These are the dates for their meeting. Svax meeting on the seventh, we're hoping to have final recommendations. And then we're also going to be meeting with Sback and PNO on the fourteenth. And we'll be bringing this to the board on the fifteenth.
Okay. Thank you so much. If you could go back to the slide, you keep going. Yeah, maybe. Is that it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it. And Dr. Stevens, maybe you could just preface the, the comment. Period that we're now going to have from, from the board members with what do you mean when you say feedback on these, you know, given, given what the purpose of this. You know, list is and what, what kind of feedback would be helpful for you, knowing that we're going to engage in the actual budgeting process in the spring?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. So we are in this sort of very quick two month long period trying to prepare this, what, what President Alper has referred to. It's sort of going through an exercise to prepare a list for ACOE. We're doing that really without any sense of our revenue, without any sense of our actual enrollment. But nonetheless, ACOE wants us to prepare this list in light of the current drop in student enrollment as essentially a backup plan. They want to know that we have that on file and that we've begun some, some, some level of consideration about reductions. So nothing in this list is binding. Nothing about a board approval list on December fifteenth requires then that the district enact anything on the list. Everybody understands we'll continue to wait to get more information. Because this was really the sort of exercise, a compliance exercise. We have been limiting feedback to only our sort of community composed committees. That's the superintendent's budget advisory committee, DLEC, which is our English language advisory committee, PAC, our parent advisory committee. As well as our principals and the board of education. So tonight's feedback will be, is very important. We do want to sort of get a sense what both of the overall direction that we're taking. The categories that we're taking and generally where you see we're on the right track or where you think even in this sort of exercise format, it would be better to leave a particular cut off this list. So that I think, I, I hope I'm sort of hedging appropriately to say that nothing here is binding. And that we're sort of involved in this quick eight week long process to comply with this, with this requirement.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Stevens. And that this item is even tonight is just on for discussion. So there might be, you know, thoughts that board members have that you'll take back as part of the feedback that you're getting from everybody.
That's correct.
And I, and I'll, so if you have thoughts, you know, now is the time to raise your hand up. I did want to thank you, Assistant Superintendent Follinsby, for your leadership on this and for the. For the, the presentation of the principles that, that you identified, which I think is really helpful. And I think will, will guide us when we get to the real budgeting process that we're going to have to engage in, in the spring. It's, um, it's a way of thinking about this, you know, this critical work of budgeting. That, that I haven't really seen us do in that way before and, and, and was really helpful. So I want to thank you for that. So with that, I'll open it up to comments and questions from my colleagues. So Director Babett, did you, I know you wanted, did you want to comment? I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I know you're asking.
No, I do want to comment, but I'm happy to.
Okay.
If others want to go.
Director Babett, just so you know, I thought when you said sections, I thought you meant like educational programs, operations, you know, HR. But I don't actually think we need to limit it to that. I think if anybody has comments on any of these, anything that you can raise them now. Director Sinai?
So I also appreciate Assistant Director Follinsby, this is a lot of work that we don't normally do at this timeframe. And so I really appreciate all the energy that's put in. My questions are particularly around the educational programs, Associate Superintendent Aurelio. And while I understand this is an exercise and a compliance issue, it puts people on edge. Because now things are on, and you know, and that's not our fault, but it's a reality. So when we potentially look at a, a cost of four hundred and thirty-five thousand to a contracted out agency. That we are going to reduce by three hundred thousand, that could potentially get a nonprofit organization that's serving our families. So I'm a little curious on who that organization is and that we, or if it's multiple organizations. So that, that, that's kind of one question. Let me, I'll just throw out a couple of questions. That, that's one question. Cause I, um, how we message this is super important. Because of the destabilizing factor it could have on people, either in their future organizations or their future. Their, their sense of future stability and their employment. And we have enough problems right now with retention that this makes, I think it's really unfortunate that we're being pushed to do this before the governor even as like put out his first budget. But I guess the savings around the special ed, particularly the SPG and the special day class. Those are things that have been on the line item for reform and change. For the get-go. So I'm just kind of curious on, and these are big cuts, well, more so the, the, the IAs. And less so the, the NPS placement. But I'm just curious, like, we can put it on a line, but it has a huge impact in how we actually think it's going to roll out in a semester. You know, that we have like a semester to plan it. So I just, I want to be careful about. Putting things in, I mean, unless we're really just doing it for show. It's like, it's, it's a big lift. So tho- those were my questions, particularly around the ed programs.
So let me answer on, on the adult transition. That is Alacosta is our adult transition program. So it would be building out our own version of that program. Now, of course, we have to put things on paper and you, you know, farewell, you know, we're doing this for the county and making sure we meet those requirements. And we know that any of these special education programs, they, they don't just start up automatically. We grow them. And so there would be a process in growing them. I do believe that we can work towards reducing the SPG contract. And if we would attack it in multiple avenues, one is of course, we're looking at our own hiring and bringing, hiring our own IAs. But also we've, we have an IEP coach that is on our team and really working with our case managers and really. Looking at how we provide services and how we offer services and making sure that we're doing what is right and what's best for students. And, and not just automatically assigning an IA, for example, making sure we're, we're really being critical. In that the services we provide, we're also looking at ways, working with human resources. In, and our unions on how we distribute the allocation of FTE for IAs. Because right now we typically assign them to sites versus say pulling them at the central office and having some flexibility in how we assign our IAs. Specifically to students and not having them directly tied to a, a school site. So there's some, a lot, number of layers that play into that. But I believe that is, this is work, and I've been working with our executive directors on Mansinger on, on these items and something we definitely want to tackle. Regardless of the budget cuts or not, I think they're important items to tackle.
So I'll just flag a concern around Alacosta. Long-term, well-respected organization where families feel very connected to the organization. So, and to build a new program versus the ability to work with an existing one, I think we need to seriously evaluate. Again, knowing that we're not necessarily doing it, but you know, I'm sure that they'll be on edge seeing it on the list.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Babett. I think you're nice.
Yes. And thank you so much. Um, I actually wanted to start with the, um, the budget development principles. Again, thank you for this work and thank you for really taking the suggestions from the board to make sure that we start with a thoughtful way of guiding principles. I noticed in number six, we talk about the district will make interrelated budgets like the general fund, BSEP. And the state supplemental grant available to committees, even if each committee has a particular purview. And I just want to highlight that our supplemental grant funds, and I just want to ask the question, has it changed? In which we can now supplant those supplemental funds to, to take care of general funds needs?
I can, I can respond to that, Director Babett. We're facing a lot of budget reductions. So what was thought of as supplanting previously? Some of these programs are actually going to be, they would have been cut or eliminated if alternative funding was not provided. So we're not saying we're going to supplant programs in, for instance, in LCAP or any other funding source. We're just saying in those particular funding sources. We're just saying in those particular funding sources, these programs would have gone away unless we found alternative funding. So this supplanting, the planting assumes both programs are operating side by side. But because we're facing such significant budget cuts, some of these programs are going to have to go away. And the only way that we can either maintain them or fund them is if we find alternative funding sources. That only that answers your question.
So you're saying that we're going to have a reduction in our number of unduplicated students, which would lower our LCAP supplemental funds anyway?
Actually, actually, that's not the case. So we haven't started looking at the interplay between departments. We think we may have a little bit more in terms of our unduplicated pupil count. But I don't think the thought is to supplant anything in LCAP. I think we're looking more at other programs. Looking at restricted or new funding sources to see if there's anything in that program that we will be cutting from our program and then possibly the other grants can pick those up.
Okay, so this supplemental grant excludes LCAP plan supplemental funds? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification. And then when it comes to budget priority five around opportunities for service restructuring, I think this is an excellent goal. And I think I agree with Assistant, so sorry, Associate Superintendent Ruben Aurelio, that no matter what we do, we need to really look into this restructuring process within our district so that we can create efficiencies. This is one of the reasons why I really wanted to run for the school board so that we could have workshops and really talk about our infrastructure and how we not only, how we use our public funds wiser and more efficiently. I want to appreciate that the Sback Committee yesterday talked about bringing these things in-house was one of the things that they appreciated. Matt Meyer noted that this was the first time he saw this kind of innovative thinking around special ed and bringing it in-house. But I also want to highlight that another person did bring up that if we don't fix our back office hiring processes, then we can say we'll do this in-house. But if we don't have staff in time, this could actually end up costing us more money because these are legal mandates and then we'll be faced with more lawsuits and legal fees. So if we're going to restructure, we really need to put in the time as, as a board and a leadership team group to really talk this thing through, in my opinion. And then with regards to the OFI staffing, I just want to highlight that, that supervisor position is in LCAP supplemental funds. And we, we, we had over 250 people who wrote to us last year specifically saying, we can't have one person managing the people and being a, a director, right? So if we had a director that we now fill this role with and don't have a supervisor, we're basically back in the same position we were in last year that so many people highlighted was not efficient in providing services to our prioritized families for family engagement and equity. And I do understand that this is just for the record. But again, this would be an area where if we're going to be doing restructuring, we need to be thoughtful about how we restructure in a way in which we can give people manageable jobs and expectations and outcomes that truly serve our families. So I'll come back after other people speak if I need to. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Babbitt. Vice President Brown?
That's a perfect segue because I was just about to bring up all of the recommendations that I, well, first of all, let me start by saying thank you to Assistant Superintendent Follinsby for all of your hard work on this. But that's, I thought that was a good segue. Director Babbitt brought up the OFI positions and I know that we are doing our best to provide this information based off of the guidance that we've been given. But it makes me a little nervous to cut positions that people, that our community spent such a long time advocating for last year and to cut them so soon after the advocacy without seeing the full work being done or the fruits of the labor from that work is a bit concerning. And then I also wanted to offer my feedback under the educational programs that are, that's at the top specifically around the special SPG and IA reductions. So Superintendent Aurelio, I, while I appreciate what you shared around the collaboration with Tom and the adult school and how exciting that sounds. I think I'm a little, and, and I love the idea of homegrown IAs. I think I'm a little bit nervous and I understand this is, you know, for process, but I'm a little bit nervous about the idea of cutting that, especially in the season where it's so difficult to find IAs and it's so difficult to fill that position, which is the original reason why we, you know, we're working with this company. And so I'm nervous about that, but incredibly nervous about it without a true plan of action associated with it. One that's definitely data-driven. When we think about our increase of students who may require an IA, I know you mentioned, you know, decreasing that number. But when we continue to think about how those, that population begins to increase, I think we have to have a better plan of action before we decide to reduce ours, our outside services.
I don't know if you want me to respond or?
Yes, please.
What? No, and I agree that this, it's, it would be a process similar to what we're doing with the ERM's assessments where as we hire, we start to sort of shift or decrease it. Wouldn't be like an, an immediate cut to the contract. It's as, as you get more and more of your IAs put in place, you, you then reduce the contract that you have with the SPG with an ultimate goal to have it be reduced by 10 to 20% over time. We, it wouldn't be like a hard cut like tomorrow or, you know, in a month from now. We know it's going to take time to build those services and to ensure that we hire our own IAs and make sure they're trained in, in the way we need them to be trained to work with our student population. So we, we know it's a process. It will, it's not going to happen overnight.
Okay, thanks, Director Vasudev.
Hi, thanks. I feel like a lot of my peers already raised all the concerns that I had. So hard to follow Vice President Brown. But just wanted to say again, thank you, my sincere appreciation to the staff for putting together this presentation. I know these are hard conversations. These are not easy conversations, definitely not my favorite board conversations to have. And so I appreciate you being really thoughtful about how you're engaging the public with the limited time that we have. So I wanted to acknowledge and appreciate your work. And I also agree with Director Sinai that even though this is just an exercise, obviously it's going to raise a lot of community concerns and it's going to hit community hard, especially when they've just advocated for these things. We've just approved them and now it feels like we're taking them away. It feels you know, a bit like whiplash for the community and also it can be demoralizing. So I just want to acknowledge that. In terms of the special education cuts, I think, you know, agree with what Director Brown, what Director Babbitt said, that we need to fix our backend hiring processes to make these reductions really come to fruition. And so I just want to echo that comment. On the transportation side for those cuts, I did want to ask Associate Superintendent Aurelio and and Associate Superintendent Follinsby, if do, do, will those cuts lead to any reduction in service? And so you can answer that. I, I, if you want to answer that now, I have more comments, but maybe just, just answer that. I'm a little.
I can answer that now. There will be no, there'll be no reduction in services. The positions that we're, we're proposing to freeze have not been filled for several years. And we'll actually be increasing hours for our bus drivers. They'll all be a 7.5. They'll be full-time basically. So that will actually attract more bus drivers because the salary will be a little bit more attractive. And they know they'll be having work for seven and a half hours pretty, as opposed to the split shift that they know have.
Oh, that's great. All right. So that, that alleviates that concern. And then regarding OFI, I'm very concerned about the proposed cuts. And as our advocates mentioned tonight, you know, even if it's just an exercise, budgets tell stories and they tell stories about our values. And so I would like, and before the final list comes to the board in December, I would like to see some contingency plans in place specifically for the Spanish language bilingual OFI position that serves monolingual Spanish speaking families district-wide. I'd like to see an update to the board about the Spanish speaking seminars hosted by PICA. I'd like to see when those, when those are happening, what they look like. You know, they're only for a limited time. I want to learn more about the PICA seminars. And that's obviously not going to be as substantive as having someone in-house to do this work, right? We shouldn't be consulting, contracting out to PICA every year. It'd be great if we had that in-house knowledge. And so in addition to PICA, I'd like to also see, and it's my understanding that we have not hired the OFI position for Sylvia Mendez yet, which is another request from the Latinx families in our district, from the families in the 2W, in the TWI program. If that position could be a split position between the Sylvia Mendez community and the central office, I would like to see if that could be considered as a part of a contingency plan in case we do have to make these budget cuts. But that we preserve that work so that we're not contracting out to PICA every year because we keep not meeting the needs of our families. And lastly, I'd like to remind both the district staff and my colleagues that cutting the split position out, even if it's just as part of an exercise, is in direct contradiction to the work outlined for our district as part of the Latinx resolution. The resolution calls for our district to improve Latinx parent engagement in Spanish through culturally responsive Latinx parent engagement seminars that are open to all the sites. And so as we heard from the advocates, there's still a lack of outreach being felt by the Spanish speaking community with regards to the master plan. With, you know, regards to PICA, with regards to STEM steps and all these different interventions that we tell the community that they're for them, but they have never heard of them. They are not engaged. They don't know when they're happening, right? So obviously we're still struggling to move forward. And I just don't want us to take a step back with these proposals when we're really struggling just to move forward a little bit inch by inch with our community. So thank you so much for your work. But I, you know, I want some contingency plans presented if we have to make these cuts.
Thank you, Director Vasudev. Director Sinai?
Did you have any questions, President Alper? I didn't want to jump you.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Just a couple of quick questions. I really, I support Director Vasudev in looking for creative solutions. I think none of these, not, there's not one thing on this list that any of us feel good about. But if there's ways to be creative and collaborative to come up with some ways that we can, you know, kind of put things together in a way we hadn't thought of before, it would be really good. And I think the OFI positions are important. I have a question, Dr. Stevens, around when you talked about the hiring process for the OFI positions that we have not frozen that hiring process. If these are on the cut list in December, are, are you, is it, it, so let me know if I heard this right. We might be hiring people in the next month or two that will then be laying off. Could, could you help me understand the timeframe on that? Cause I want to be careful about hiring people into positions that we know we're going to eliminate. And now with the new state law of having to notify people in March. I know we've always had to do that with our certificated folks, but now apparently we have to do that with our classified folks. That, that's going to be a very tenuous position. So let me, did I misunderstand that?
No, I'll, I'll try to clarify and I'll lean on Samantha just for some, some extra clarification if I sort of go astray in any of my response. So why don't we sort of ta- separate out the two OFI fund, two OFI positions that were proposed to be on long-term funding? And the two OFI positions that we know right now are on one-time funding. So just to take those, the two positions on one-time funding, we have been putting together an eligibility list. That eligibility list is all, almost prepared. And Samantha, please do correct me if at any point I sort of, sort of go astray with this.
That actually, that list does already exist. It's the bilingual one that they're still working on.
Thank you.
So the, the, the OFI liaison is on non-bilingual position. That list already does exist and it's the bilingual one that's closing very quickly. They're doing the assessment and all of that.
Yeah.
We actually, we're actually interviewing for the bilingual one upon return from break.
And, and so now to go to Director Sinai's question. So we do face this dilemma in that we haven't yet hired for these positions on one-time funding. And that dilemma is that if we don't identify an ongoing revenue source, we would, just as you're kind of describing, be bringing them into the district and potentially laying them off for that March 15th deadline, only a few months later. And so we thought that it was reasonable to propose that these positions be frozen, given the very short time period that these people might actually be in the district. So that's, that's one thing. To take a look then at the two positions that are approved by the board and are on ongoing funding. Associate Superintendent Ruben Aurelio just described, you know, we are right now looking to fill one bilingual position. That's the empty Sylvia Mendez position. We actually hire, sorry, interviewed some candidates, maybe six weeks ago, none was selected. And so went out to create a new eligibility list for that particular position. So what we're proposing is that we would continue through that particular process to the point that we would, you know, be ready to interview. And we are imagining that roughly the time is going to sync up so that a board decision to freeze or continue forward would roughly correspond with the approximate timing of a hiring decision. So I, I hope I'm describing that the right way, but right now we continue that process until these two particular positions are resolved.
So just to clarify, that, that's line 23, that you're talking about, that you're, you're just in the process of interviewing or finishing a list or something. Is that, is that line 23?
That would be for the empty Sylvia Mendez position, which is not listed here. We're not proposing to cut Sylvia Mendez's OFI liaison. And then it would be from that very same eligibility list that we could hire into line 23.
Okay, so our line, sorry, President Alper, I'm just trying to get clear. Is line 22 and 23, are those positions open with eligibility lists now that have not been frozen yet?
So let me clarify. So
Thanks.
So for number 22, line 22, yes, we have a list. We have not hired anybody yet from that list into that position. That is one of the new positions that was created last spring. 23 is the new position that was created last spring and we're getting a new list that would allow us to be able to hire into that position if we do make that decision to continue moving forward in that direction. And that again, is the position that was created in the spring. In the interim, since the spring, we've had somebody resign from the district who was in a bilingual position already at Sylvia Mendez. And so that's the position that Superintendent Stevens was talking about that we are working to fill right this moment and do not have on this list because we do intend to fill that position. So that's sort of the three positions that we were talking about.
Okay. We've got a few more minutes left for this item. Director Musgraves, one?
I just really quickly on the note of just like projected values going forward with this budget cuts. I just like to caution against looking at things approved for COVID one-time funding is like disposable because I think the idea that a lot of us were hoping is that they would be approved as line items moving forward. I understand some of them were just actual COVID one-time budget items that were needed, but a lot of the things were things that we were just needing to approve and didn't have the budget for. And I understand that this might be disposable, but I just like to, I guess, caution against the idea of moving forward that things that we granted COVID one-time funding for this year are things that we won't have to continue funding in the future. But anyhow, a question.
No, thank you for that comment. All right, last word, Director Vasudev.
To Assistant Superintendent Tobias, can we combine the Sylvia Mendez position that we're actively hiring for right now with line 23? With that split position, is that a possibility as a possible creative solution?
It is a possible solution and I, we can discuss it more. Dr. Stevens and I can discuss and see if that would work to help resolve some of the issues. see if that would work to help resolve some of the issues. Um, I believe it's shared between Sylvia Mendez and another one of our elementary schools. So I have to look into that piece as well.
It's Thousand Oaks.
Thousand Oaks, yeah. Um, so.
Yeah, I'd love to.
But it, it could be that, that, that one becomes a full-time bilingual position that does Sylvia Mendez and yes, we could be creative.
Great.
Is the answer.
All right, um, all right. Oh, Director Babett, did you, did you have your hand up?
I, I did. I was just hoping we could do a, um, I don't know how possible this is, but um, a projection of our students to actual grades so that we're not, um, overstaffed and we're really thinking about how we consolidate classes and how we actually enroll students differently so that, um, we can have more of a direct classrooms level of student to teacher ratio in our, um, funding allocations. Hopefully that makes sense.
I, I think that's addressed in item thirty, the realigned staffing for class sizes. And that's what we, we would be doing as part of the teacher template and making sure we're closer to the original goal piece up.
All right. And I guess I'm also saying add to that, making sure that we assign kids at schools so that that realization is possible. Cause part of why, you know, we don't have just a straight, we lost four hundred kids, then how come we just don't lose the teachers to correlate to that classroom? Is because there's not necessarily a whole classroom. That's what that's, but thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Director Babett. Um, all right, um, thanks very much, everybody. And, um, I'm gonna move, Dr. Stevens, is it okay if we do the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, we, um, we're gonna do the public hearing real quick and then we'll go to the bear item. Um, just because the agenda was a little bit unclear on when the public hearing was starting. So I'm gonna open the public hearing on the educator effectiveness grant application, um, and see if there's anybody here for public comment on that. Item, which is item thirteen point one. Um, not seeing anybody, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Um, and Dr. Stevens, do we have to take? Do we, we just had to hold, hold the public here? We're not, we're not taking action on this.
That's correct.
Okay.
So we'll be bringing this item back for action to the board on December eighth.
Right, okay. All right, thank you. So that was the public hearing. Now we'll go, um, to the discussion item, um, which is discussion twelve point two. Um, and is, who's doing this? Is this, Dr. Stevens, are you starting? I forget. No, Mr. Skills.
I think it's going to be Mr. Skills. I think he's hiding, hiding behind that screen somewhere. In fact, he's still hiding. Look at him.
There, sorry, the lights are too dark. Hello, everyone.
That's one way to enjoy a board meeting.
Well, I've been enjoying this one, actually. Uh, thank you for having me and I'm very happy to, um, to be able to be, be here to talk about, uh, a historic, um, thirty-year extension of the Bay or City of Berkeley Bayer Development Agreement. So, um, my role, in case you're watching from the outside, I'm the B U S D C T E Program Supervisor, all of our career technical education programs, which include many STEM pathways at the high school level and connections to the community college STEM programs. Um, tonight we're, uh, discussing, uh, again, the thirty-year extension of the development agreement between the City of Berkeley and Bayer Pharmaceuticals. Um, and the specific portion we're gonna discuss is the community benefits for science, technology, engineering, arts and math, or STEAM education. So the community benefits section of the, the thirty-year agreement. Um, the City of Berkeley and Bayer have tentatively agreed to a thirty-year extension of the nineteen ninety-two Bayer Development Agreement or DA from now on. Like the nineteen ninety-two DA, the twenty-twenty-two agreement includes various community benefits, um, including but not limited to STEAM education. The twenty-twenty-two proposed DA dedicates nearly fifty percent of the overall community benefits allocation towards STEAM education through February twenty fifty-two. So you can see why this is important for, for all of us here in the community, thirty years. Um, and, um, again, it's between the City of Berkeley and, um, Bayer, but all of our students, um, Berkeley students will be beneficiaries. The DA is expected to go before the City, Berkeley City Council for a first reading on November thirtieth and final approval December fourteenth. And let me give you a little background on the current agreement, which expires, um, this, this year, into this year. The current development agreement initiated in nineteen ninety-two launched the Biotech Academy at Berkeley High School, established the Biotech Partners Program, you heard a little bit about that in public comment, and provided funding for the district's K eight STEM programming, explicitly prioritizing Berkeley students from South and West Berkeley. The two-year Biotech Academy at B H S serves eleventh and twelfth grade students from backgrounds historically underrepresented in STEM majors and careers. Approximately fifty Biotech Academy students participate in high-value paid summer internships between their junior and senior years. These internships are largely supported by Bayer, um, the funding, uh, the stipends for the students and other supports around the internships through our collaboration with the Biotech Partners Program. In addition to Bayer, other industry partners and internship providers where our students are placed include BioMarin, Genentech, Berkeley Labs, Liberty Laboratories, Children's Hospital, Oakland Research Institute, and East Bay Municipal Utility District. And by no means have I listed, uh, an exhaustive list here. Funds from the existing development agreement have also supported internships for students enrolled in the Biom manufacturing institute at the community college level, including many of our Biotech Academy graduates, students from Berkeley High who progressed to Biom manufacturing institute. Uh, the total community benefits package element of the proposed twenty-twenty-two extension is thirty-three million, one hundred thousand dollars over a thirty-year period. I'm sorry, of that, forty-eight and a half percent is directed towards science, technology, engineering, arts and math education and career technical education partners. You can see why I'm here. Um, over the several months, uh, Mayor Aragüe and Councilmember Taplin from District Two convened an ad hoc advisory group to explore the community benefits portion of the DA. Directors Vasudeo and, and Sinai and myself, um, served on this ad hoc committee. We represented B U S D, um, on this ad hoc committee, as did Erin Rose from Berkeley Public Schools Fund, who you also heard from earlier today, and are very pleased to report that there was overwhelming support for STEAM education among the diverse representatives in the group. The resulting agreement between the city and Bayer in one year, oh, sorry, in year one, um, or next year, twenty-twenty-two, for STEAM education would be three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars and escalate at roughly two percent per year over the duration of the agreement. Um, as stated, this would be divided as follows. Ten percent of the, of the three eighty-eight, let's call that our baseline year, um, next year, uh, for transitional kindergarten through eighth grade programs. Fifty percent for high school career technical ed- education and paid internships, so, uh, STEAM internships. And forty percent for community college STEAM career pathways and paid internships. Again, the, the large portion of, um, uh, both, uh, high school and community college going towards supporting the internships. Um, we are very, very pleased to see the City of Berkeley and Bayer are continuing a thirty-year commitment to STEAM education. In keeping with the spirit of the nineteen ninety-two DA and the twenty-twenty vision for Berkeley's children and youth, we, B U S D, are recommending some friendly amendments to the proposed DA that will retain a focus on students who are underrepresented in STEAM education and career pathways. Uh, basically, we wanted to, to make sure the language is very clear. It's a thirty-year agreement. Um, and we know that, um, communities change over time. Um, so specifically, we request that City Council amend section four, and you can look in, uh, in the documents for this evening, you can look in the appendix and you can see, uh, the section I'm referring to. Section four, Perimeters Governing Community Benefits Program and City Development Fees, to include these, include these four points. One, ensure that educational experts seated on the grant committee have STEAM experience serving populations historically underrepresented in STEAM majors and careers. Two, be clear and intentional about directing grants to Berkeley's public school students with emphasis on serving students from populations historically underrepresented in STEAM majors and careers and contribute to diversifying this, the STEAM career pipeline, lending our students from, from our schools in high wage, high-growth STEAM careers in the Bay Area. Three, adjust the timeline to align with, with planning for the academic year. The, the current language, um, has a March first award, sorry, has a August thirtieth award for funds. We would like to see that March first, um, to better align with our planning, our long-term planning. Understanding in year one, meaning next year, that wouldn't be possible, um, uh, for, for lots of reasons that are between Bayer and the City of Berkeley. And four, have a minimum timeframe of five years for grant period, grant award periods. With the understanding that for ramping up and sustainability of a STEAM education program, more than five years may be needed. And again, any details of where these amendments are, um, are, are, uh, the appendix, um, you can find in your, uh, board documents. And, uh, after that, I'd like to just, um, s- send this up to discussion. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Skills. Um, appreciate that background that's, that's, um, that's new to many of us, even though you and Director Vasudev and Director Sinai and Miss Rhodes have been working on this, um, so hard over the last few months, which we're so grateful to all of you for. Um, let me turn it over to Director Sina, I think, next. Okay.
Great, thank you, President Alper. And, uh, thank you, Mr. Skills, for all of your work. Uh, not just on this agreement, but for all of your work in building the career, uh, technical education program, um, in our district and for fostering such a strong and collaborative relationship with our community colleges, our nonprofit partners and our local employers. You, you've really represented and, and developed a stellar, a stellar program. So thank you for all your work. Um, and, and also your, your car, your partner in crime, Stephanie Allen, uh, who really helped make this, this all happen. Um, I want to express my sincere appreciation to Bayer and the City of Berkeley for extending the thirty-year development agreement with a robust community benefit contribution to STEAM education. This has been a work in progress for, I think, more than a year, but with great intensity for the last few months, all under the constraints of a pandemic. Um, it was no easy task to get community engagement around the development agreement, and I think people worked really hard. Uh, I appreciate the persistence and tenacity of the city team led by Mayor Aragüe and City Councilmember Taplin, who represents District Two where, uh, Bayer sits, um, along with the Bayer team and getting the DA where it is today. Um, and as Mr. Skill said, the time sensitivity of this is that it goes to council on November thirtieth and we don't have another meeting before then. So we thought it was really important to just educate us all on what was, was, was going on with the agreement. The, uh, community benefit element is just one piece of an overall planning document that projects the overall growth of the Bayer site for three decades. Um, you heard from the student Miguel and Ms. Gaden from Biotech Partners how valuable the first thirty-year commitment was and what it set in motion for our underrepresented students in getting into the STEAM career pathways. So the next thirty years is as critically important to really institutionalize the equity and access that we want for the students of Berkeley to be able to have a pathway into, um, good paying, often union, uh, jobs right here at Bayer in Berkeley. Um, so it's, again, it's in the spirit of our college and career readiness elements of the twenty-twenty vision of the nineteen ninety-two DA, as, as Mr. Skill said, that focuses on South and West Berkeley, that we offer these amendments. Um, Mayor Aragüe sent word today via email that he supports our recommendations and he sees the proposed language as furthering the goals of the development agreement. He's now gonna work with the city attorney and Bayer to work to submit the proposed language in time for the November thirtieth deliberations at the city council. So again, we thank the mayor, council member Taplin and our city partners, and we look forward to our ongoing collaboration with the city and Bayer, as well as all of the employers in our CTE Advisory Committee who are really making sure we have robust pathways for the Berkeley community. Now, I'm gonna pass it to Director Vasudev, who's also been actively engaged in this, to talk about the process she's been through.
Yeah, thank you, Director Sinai and also Mr. Skills and also Erin Rhodes for your great work. Um, just, you know, submitting and representing, uh, the district's interests, but also just continuing to find ways to partner with our, you know, community colleges and with Biotech partners to support underrepresented students in STEAM education. So just really quickly from my peers, uh, you know, I was invited by Councilmember Chaplin, very, uh, appreciative of his leadership in March to start participating in these ad hoc committee meetings. Was pleased just to see the overwhelming support for STEAM education. That was really clear and also very appreciative of Bayer's support in our community for STEAM education. As everybody knows, Black and Latinx students are often underrepresented or in, in, in STEAM classes and in advanced science and math classes. And for me, this is something that's really personal. And I don't know how many of my peers know this, but I went to a technical education high school. And the only reason I went to architecture school was because I had access to STEAM education. I had never had access to STEAM education before. And so that was really transformative for me at the high school level to be able to go study architecture and then, you know, get my masters in city planning. But it was really that experience that helped me get into my career. And many times I was often the only female or only Latina in my class. And so we, I know that Mr. Skills works really hard to make sure that our underrepresented students have access to quality STEAM education at our high schools. And I know that he and Ms. Rose are pushing really hard to make sure that they have access to STEAM education at the K eight level. And so I'm really appreciate, appreciative of Bayer, Councilmember Taplin and our mayor for working hard to make sure that all of the, the community's diverse needs are met and that education is a key component of the diverse needs that are being met with this historic development agreement. It's a thirty-year agreement, which, you know, what a great legacy project for them to work on. And to, just to be a part of it. It's, it's a very hard work. There's lots of competing interests in a city like Berkeley. Um, so I'm really appreciative of their support for the district as well. And I was very excited as, um, my, my colleague director, Sina, mentioned to have received word from the mayor that he supports, um, our proposed changes to this. So thank you, everyone. And I hope that, uh, everyone is, um, can reach out to them and just, just appreciate their hard work and leadership at the city level on this.
Um, great. Thank you all so much. Um, I, uh, I also wanna, um, I think I already did this, but thank you all again. Mr. Skills, Director Vasudev, Director Sina, um, Ms. Rhodes. Um, it really is, um, I know, I know, cause I've been sort of on the sidelines, but watching just how much work has gone into this and um, um, and, and then our city partners and Bayer themselves. Um, and I also, I too want to thank the mayor um, for his support for the amendments that we, that we're requesting. And, um, and I guess I'll ask, um, um, my, my, we're, we're, I guess my request, if, if my colleagues agree with it, is to ask Dr. Stevens and Director Vasudev Director Sina to continue working with, with Mr. Skills and Ms. Rhodes and, and city partners to, um, to do whatever we can do to make sure that these amendments that we want to see in the final agreement actually end up there. Um, I, I assume that everybody is on board with that, but, but let me, let me pause there and see, um, Director Babett, you, you have your hand up.
Well, I don't understand why we want that. Definitely on board. And, um, just wanted to ask a quick question as I also share in appreciation. What is our data collection and reporting like around these, around this work?
I'm probably the best person to take that on. So, um, actually, we do, uh, we, this year, um, in sixth grade, we launched the Universal Sixth Grade STEM Maker Program. So we're collecting data this very, we have one semester of, of data, students, um, at all three middle schools who've been participating both school day and after school. And I'll be really happy to do a full board presentation on that in the spring, cause that's a big new CTE, um, uh, initiative. Um, other than that, I have all of our enrollment data. Maybe I did not share that with you yet this year, but I do have it from this, from this year, our, um, seventeen hundred individual enrollments at Berkeley High School in CTE. I haven't broken that down, but I can by STEM pathway. Um, and I can very, very proudly share that ours, um, pathways are very representative of the overall student population. Now, Biotech Academy is actually very specifically and directly, uh, uh, STEM pathway to serve students from populations underrepresented in STEM. So actually, the Biotech Academy specifically is not representative of all Berkeley High. It's representative of students who, who have historically been shut out of STEM careers and STEM majors. Um, but I'm happy to share all of our enrollment data. Matter of fact, I can send that to you tomorrow. I have a, a report and I can come to the board at any time and share um, enrollment data, student progress data, and, and also very proudly, uh, dual enrollment data and then student transition to, um, our community colleges.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
Um, all right, any other, other comments? We'll look forward to seeing these amendments in the final agreement and, um, and then, and then doing the actual work. Great, great. Thank you all so much, Mr. Skills. Thanks, thanks for being here. Um, Now, now, let me just make sure I'm not forgetting anything that we did the public hearing. Okay, now is the, the time for, um, pub, the second public comment period. So if there's anybody here who wants to give public comment, now is the time. Vice President Brown is packing her bags.
I'm getting my, uh, time.
Oh, your timer already. Okay, well, it's, it's all for not, because nobody's raised their hand. So, um, so I think that means, um, I think that means we're done, so we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Night. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.